Okay, we are now live. That's right.
So just to let everybody who is either here or listening to, watching be aware, we do need to have a five trustee quorum to start the meeting. So we're just waiting to make quorum. And we just are. Just a smidge. Okay, so we now officially have five trustees. I am going to call the meeting to a quarter at 6:04. Trustee President Misinski.
Vice President for Finance Paige Allen.
Trustee Vanneta.
Trustee Jackson.
Trustee Paige Barnum Board Secretary.
Trustee Gauz.
Executive Director Andrea Nicolai.
Assistant Director Melanie Metzger.
Finance Director Adam Spell.
Sean Smith for Treasurer.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes from the previous meeting. Are there any questions regarding those? The operating check register. Any questions regarding that? And the capital fund check register. There is none. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda, including the minutes and check register?
I make a motion to accept the agenda of the check register and the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor? Jaree, that was an I, correct? Trustee Gauz, I mean.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Moving on to Finance.
The three items included in the agenda present the library's 2026 fiscal year activity through the two months ending August 31st of 2025. So like every month, the Treasurer's Report includes two schedules. The first schedule presents the net change in fund balance compared to the budget amounts approved by the board. And then the second schedule presents a further breakdown of expenditures by category. Total support and revenue were in line with the approved budget, while total expenditures were slightly over the approved budget. The capital fund report presents the financial activity for the capital projects approved by the board. And then the last schedule is the cash investment summary, which presents the activity and the accounts during the reporting.
Thank you. Moving on to Committee and Liaison Reports. We'll start with trustees reporting out and events that we're excited with. I will do my reporting out. Since our last meeting, I attended the Bike the Branches event, which was a lot of fun. And I attended the Band Book Readout, Read for Your Rights, last week for Band Book Week. And as I've been saying with it, I'm proud of myself for not crying, for starting with the power and the importance of free speech and ideas and ending with the end of mice and men. So gay for me. Anyone else?
I'll report out attendance at an event earlier today in this room. The Friends and Foundation had their weekly book review. Today's book was reviewed by the one, the only Assistant Director Melanie Metzger. And there were some really nice remarks from Roger Green in the opening. And I'm drawing a blank on the name of the book, but one of the big takeaways was that to be sort of happy, satisfied citizens and people in this world, they need art, church, and acts of service. And Assistant Director Metzger did a great job at reminding everyone in the audience, and everyone had their own, you know, personal experiences too, about how all of those facets of being healthy and happy can be found in the library, engaging library events. So it was a nice presentation.
Thank you. The book was called The Connection Cure. It's by Julia Hots.
Hey, this is Trustee Vanneta. I went with Director Nicolai to the Tasting History event that was held here. It was fantastic. They talked about all sorts of recipes throughout history, some of them horrific, some of them delicious. And it was just fun to kind of engage with that. And at the end, they handed out printouts from our like resources section. So stuff that you can't really check out, but they've scanned them and printed them and handed them to me. So I'll be trying some horrific recipes to torture my family.
All right. Moving on, Executive Committee Report. So Executive Committee met on September 17th. We had a really long meeting with and covered lots of things. So I'm gonna try and go quick for everyone. We discussed the RFP for Legal Counsel, which needed to, we needed to return to from several months ago. And where we're at, there's going to be more about that later on. So I won't take up too much of your time with it. New business wise, trustees Vanneta and Gauz have officially been switched on committees, reassigning trustee Vanneta to Strategic Planning and trustee Gauz to the Facilities Committee. We are working on a social activity to get us all together as humans. I'm put together a doodle poll that I've not sent out yet. So we'll send that out shortly. We discussed training and wanted to remind everyone that each trustee's required two hours of training each year. And we want to encourage trustees that if you are doing something training wise, to let your other trustees know that that is happening. Additionally, we're going to be working on organizing some trainings from Upper Hudson so that we all can stay on board with those. For the new trustees, you just did the core training, so that counts as your two hours. But you are obviously welcome to join and over educate yourself. So please, you know, let everybody know if and when you're doing things. And those were the main points that I wanted to hit on from Executive Committee. For the Strategic Planning Committee, oh, with Executive Committee, we don't have a next meeting scheduled. For Strategic Planning, we met on September 10th. We are going to discuss this further in the meeting, so I won't take up too much time with that. But I do want to mention that there is a pretty quick turnaround time that we're looking at to move forward with strategic planning. Our next meeting is going to be on November 3rd to hopefully review RFP responses. And then on November 11th, when we have our next board meeting. And that is it for Strategic Planning. I'll move over to Policy and Governance.
All right. Policy and Governance met on September 23rd. We discussed what we would like to look at as sort of our work plan for the year, particularly reviewing as many policies, if not all of them, to get them all into sort of a most current review date. In New Business, later tonight, we're going to tackle three policies that the committee, well, so during the committee meeting, we reviewed three, two of which you will see tonight under New Business are the lactation and breast milk expression policy, as well as the Windows password policy. One that you will not see tonight, but the committee is still working on reviews and discussion of is the use of equipment and technology by staff policy. So until New Business, I'll kick it over to, I believe, Audit and Finance.
Audit and Finance met on September 30th to review the five-year financial plan in preparation for Director Nicolai presenting tonight. We discussed a few different scenarios and the best way to present those to the board. And you'll see those a little bit later tonight.
Right. The next two I'm going to take for Upper Hudson, we will discuss this further later, but we, we actually have met twice since our last meeting here because of just how the calendar works. Previously, in the APL meeting, we talked about the changes to the construction aid grant. So we had discussed that. And then we also discussed the Central Library budget, which we will discuss further tonight, or Director Nicolai will discuss with us further tonight. And then FFAPL, probably the most exciting thing we did was vote in trustee Marlowe as a member of the FFAPL board. And there were discussions around growing the board and some potential next steps, as well as potential opportunities for applying for funds and projects. All right. Overview of upcoming meetings. I did mention strategic planning. Does anyone else have any upcoming meetings they want to mention? FFAPL is, FFAPL's next meeting on 10/22 and strategic planning on 10/21. All right. Moving forward, Executive Director Report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So reflecting on September, the library, we celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month, which began on September 15th and actually runs through tomorrow. And we had displays and programs to honor that rich heritage across all seven branches. And I have to say, at a time when a lot of our Latinx neighbors are fearful for rights and safety, it's really important to show support and promote the fact that everyone belongs at a public library. APL also makes available these red cards that are know your rights cards in Spanish, as well as other languages. And they're available on community tables in all of our branches. In other positive news, in September, we also added sensory kits, or we're in the process, adding sensory kits to each of our branches, thanks to a partnership with Bring On Spectrum, which is a local nonprofit that supports neurodiverse and neurotypical people to achieve their best quality of life in the capital region. So our staff are training on how to implement and incorporate those tools and practices within library programs and passive spaces of the library and how to bring those tools into our toolkit. As trustee Misinski, as President Misinski mentioned, the FFAPL met. And I just want to remind everyone that since the Friends and Foundation of Albany Public Library is still in a transition period, there will be no literary legends gala this year. And I'm sorry to have to say that, because I know we all like to dress up and go out library. But, uh, but hopefully they will be able to roar back next year. And certainly, and I join many in supporting them in their growth and transition as an organization. On the bright side, donations continue to flow into the Friends and Foundation of Albany Public Library, and they are on solid, solid financial footing. Said goodbye to our first public safety member. His last day was September 30th, and he does wish to say thank you for having me as part of the APL family, and that you will all be missed. Really enjoyed working here. And he left to go back to the Department of Corrections for a session there. And we wished him well. He did a wonderful job here. Processed reviewing resumes. Now the job opening closes, or rather, applications are due October 20th. As far as community engagement, we handed out a number of e-readers at Albany Housing Authority. And we also saw three new digital navigators start at Washington Avenue in Pine Hills late September. And these are volunteers and students from New Albany who are helping people along with their technology-related tasks at the library. We attended a bunch of back-to-school, excuse me, events across the city through our Programs and Partnerships Department. And we also celebrated the end of summer reading with Assembly Member Gabriela Romero, who handed out certificates to a number of children who came with their families. We also had this wild color powder party where we both got completely drenched in colored powder. And it was, it was a ton of fun. And the pictures are in our Instagram, if you care to look. As far as featured upcoming programs, I want to call out two in particular, our Diabetes Prevention Program on October 6th at Howe for adults. Also have a banner of Health and Safety Plus History Month, the Albany Gay Men's Forest Performance on October 18th here at Washington Avenue in this very room. Under Branch Services at Arbor Hill West Hill, Arbor Hill collected more than 40 surveys and conducted two programs to seek input on the upcoming mural that will be installed across from certain places by Jade Warwick, the artist. At Delaware, we had Hill Country Cloggers, which is a bluegrass pop and country repertoire dancing crew. At Howe, we had the funk band Slingshot and Courtyard music programs. And dance programs always do really well for libraries. So here are two examples of that. As far as North Albany news, Deanna DeCarlo, who's the head of Branch Services, officially takes over as the branch manager of North Albany, which is our smallest and mightiest small branch of our seven branches. And she will be leading the team of four there at North Albany and spending some time of her each week of her work located there on site. Pine Hills held a historic Albany Foundation architectural walking tour, neighborhood, and a self-guided tour. So you can stop by Pine Hills or any, at any location we have the walking tours. If we don't, we will very soon. But the walking tours are definitely available in virtual form at Pine Hills. And it's a great way to get to know the architecture of the neighborhood. Washington Avenue, the Albany Media Creative Lab, considered to be very popular. We had 30 monthly attendance since September 23rd. And we have a very dedicated crew here, led by Susan Palmer, who is librarian, who basically oversees all of the New Media Creative Lab, making sure it stays stocked with all the great things that need to be there. In terms of library news, we have a new, growing Readers' Leaker Bulletin email newsletter for parents and caregivers with children ages zero to five. It's a great way to learn about all the programming that we have going on for early, young readers, pre-kindergarten readers. And when I say readers, I'm children who enjoy being read to and who are getting ready to read themselves. So I encourage anyone out there who has small children or knows people with small children to sign up for that program so that you can get this email newsletter. We also enjoyed sharing news that, oh, that great famous program that was on in the 80s that I remember fondly is coming back, led by Michael Fries, who's the official PBS librarian. That got a lot of traction on our social media. In our collection management news, we accepted a small grant from Interact, which is an advocacy nonprofit organization for intersex youth. And through that grant, and in collaboration with representatives from Interact, we've added a number of recommending titles to increase our offerings in that vein in our nonfiction collection. So with that, I will actually lastly mention that we donated some voice-over-internet phone phones that we can't use anymore to some local high schools. These were phones that could not be resold, so to most of these, or most affiliated schools that can use them, which is great, because we had to replace all of ours. That is very important. Thank you very much.
We just flipped away from the agendas. Okay, now we're moving on to monthly statistics. Thank you.
Certainly. So you have three reports under Statistics. I want to first mention door counts, which continue to trend upwards with Pine Hills and Howe numbers being close to what they were in 2019, which is the year that we really look to as a place to get back to in terms of our stats district-wide. And North Albany's door count, in fact, was higher than it was in September of 2019, which is a testament to the workforce there and their ability to bring people in. And hopefully, people, more, more people continue to discover North Albany as it is tucked away a little bit. You can't really see it from North Pearl. So we're glad that people are continuing to discover north. Room use also continues its upward trend with most of our branches trending higher than they were in 2019, September. One item to note, there was a slight dip in usage between the months of August and September. However, Washington, Pine Hills, Howe, and APL overall saw an increase. And lastly, programming attendance was up year-to-date at Arbor Hill West Hill, Bach, Pine Hills, with the latter two being above their pre-2020 numbers. And we do usually see a dip in program attendance numbers between August and September, but saw bumps at four different branches and that kind of contributed to an overall bump in attendance in August and September. So happy with that. And then the other report I included for you tonight is the Digital Content Report that we received from Upper Hudson. And you'll notice that there was a significant decrease in checkouts of video and music. And that's directly related to our very strategic and deliberate change that we made to Hoopla offerings. You'll remember that video and music through Hoopla were the least used formats through Hoopla. And so we decided to restrict access to those formats, which definitely didn't make everybody happy. There were a small and vocal group of users who appreciate the video and music. But this was a strategic decision based on the fact that Hoopla doesn't really allow for a lot of control. You can put certain controls into place, which we have done, but there's no way to ultimately regulate how much we spend month-to-month on Hoopla without taking a hard look at these formats. And a lot of libraries are struggling with Hoopla as a vendor in general. They are very responsive. And we, it's not like they haven't been working with us, but ultimately, there isn't a fail-proof way to control these costs other than restricting access to certain formats. So with audiobooks being far and away the most popular format in Hoopla, and ebooks being second to audiobooks, we decided to focus and really invest in those particular formats as we continue to evaluate Hoopla and return on investment in general. So I wanted to mention those numbers. And yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to.
I'll just chime in real briefly as, as a person that goes to the Upper Hudson meetings. Albany is not the only library struggling with how to deal with Hoopla and the costs for it. Seeing no other questions, we'll move forward to unfinished business, which is the legal services, RFP.
Okay, so I want to thank the Executive Committee for bringing this to the agenda again. And as trustee, as President Misinski mentioned, the timeline for RFP responses is fairly tight. Well, actually, it's more generous, I should say, than it was the last time the board released an RFP for legal services. So the whole point of revisiting this was that last time the board issued an RFP, there were two responses and it was released around the holidays. And therefore, the board, the board's sense was that this legal services RFP might have a better chance of getting additional responses if it was released at a different time, slightly different time of year before the holidays are upon us and with a longer response time allowed. And so that's what is considered as part of this RFP. I included the red line version of the RFP so that you can clearly see the changes between the last time the RFP was issued and this time. So yeah, not a lot changed at all besides the dates. So if you have any questions, happy to address them.
If there are no questions, I would like a motion to approve the the legal services RFP for distribution. Trustee Marlowe, I move to approve the RFP for legal services.
Second, and trustee Vanneta.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I was trying to unmute. I did have a question.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
The fee for service, I thought that was something that was going to be changed. The fee structure.
I don't remember. I'm sorry.
The fee structure is still one of the four selection criteria.
No, I'm speaking about the fee structure that we want to add to the library. That's something that we, oh, I guess the people were, okay, thank you.
Do we vote again? Okay, so I, I think that we vote again, seeing nods around.
No one, no one was here when we discussed the fee structure previously when we received the, we had the old RFP and we received the responses for the RFP as far as the fee structure that the library wanted. None of you were here for that conversation.
I don't recall it.
Okay. Do we need to revote or what do we need to do?
I, I believe we need to revote.
It's only my, I'm an aye, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to the UHLS Central Library Budget. Strategic Plan, I'm so sorry. I just, so that closes unfinished business. So I'm so excited to move us along. I'm just skipping things. For new business, the first item we have is another RFP. This is in regards to the Strategic Plan Consult.
Yeah, so the Ad-Hoc Strategic Planning Committee met, as President Misinski mentioned earlier. And this is basically a revision of the RFP that was created by a previous iteration of the board of the Ad-Hoc Strategic Planning Committee, I should say. So it follows basically the same, same format. And proposals will be submitted to President Misinski. The deadline for submitting proposals is October 31st by 4:00 PM. And the selection of the proposal will be based on the most responsive and responsible proposal offering the best value to the library with qualifications, experience, references and price as factors to consider, or criteria, I should say. And we're developing a rubric with the Ad-Hoc Strategic Planning Committee so that we can grade each of the responses that come in. And we're hoping to release this RFP tomorrow so that we can give, give all the consultants out there enough time to respond. The proposal, the proposals that, or proposal that the Ad-Hoc Strategic Plan Committee wants to put forward to the board will be considered at the November board meeting. And in the meantime, the committee will meet to consider the ones that have been submitted. And there will be a time for people to submit questions if they have questions, but that's the, that's the gist of it. And we're pretty clear in the cost and charges section under proposal requirements that the proposal should include the hourly and/or flat rate for the consultant's scope of work. And the library relies on the proposer to make sure that there are no hidden costs or charges that will be incurred by the library. And the proposer must also list any out-of-pocket costs for which they will seek reimbursement. So that's pretty typical of strategic planning consultant cost considerations that I've seen as far, as far as RFPs go, and I think it'll hopefully result in some good responses. Does the Ad-Hoc Committee want to add anything to that?
I don't really, I just wanted, for clarity, say that we're going to be looking for, to approve this going out for the request going out. The request is going out tomorrow and we're hoping from the responses that come in to at the November meeting, the proposal of the person that we would like to hire is the proposal that we want to, to share just because requests and proposal are both in the RFP term. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
And I guess it's worth mentioning the overall plan, which is to have a new strategic plan in place by the beginning of the new fiscal year, starting July 1st, 2026. And this is, of course, a process that results in new goals and objectives for the library. It's very important. In fact, it's part of state law that each library have a strategic plan. And we, yeah, we had a good experience with our previous strategic plan and we're forward to hearing from the community engaging with key stakeholders so that we can really get a great plan in place and move forward.
Right. I believe that since this is coming out of committee, we don't need to make a motion for this.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
For, can you repeat what you said in reference to what's been presented at the November meeting because the proposal deadline here, the materials requirement, can you just explain what the difference is again?
Sure.
You're hoping to present who you want to select for the proposal at the November meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're hoping to get this out tomorrow and then meet again prior to our November board meeting so that in our November meeting, we can say, here's who we're interested in and why.
I also have a question. So historically, have we had a strategic planning consultant work on?
There, when I came on the board, we were working with one to start the strategic plan.
Yeah, typically libraries will hire, especially a library of our size, will hire a consultant to develop the new strategic plan for the board and for the library.
And I can say for the last four iterations of strategic plans, we've had a consultant. Any more questions? So I believe that because it's coming out of committee, we don't need a motion, but we do need a second to approve the strategic plan consultant RFP for distribution.
Trustee Jackson, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Now we'll move forward to the Upper Hudson Library System Central Library Budget, Library 2026 Budget.
All right, so the Central Library Advisory Committee met and you can see the Central Library Budget draft materials from this meeting. The total aid amounts to $228,100 coming to APL and to Upper Hudson. The APL is of course the central library for the entire Upper Hudson Library System. And so within each library system, there is a central library that managed, or that I should say, is responsible for spending the funds that come to the central library from the state. So each year, the Central Library Advisory Committee gets together and talks about what would serve the Upper Hudson Library System best in terms of how to spend the central library dollars. So Upper Hudson for the past several years has paid for the Overdrive platform annual subscription out of the central library funds and that's the $12,000 that you see. Magazine collection, which is wildly popular, is another annual access fee of $25,000. The Vega mobile app annual subscription is $19,712. That's the app that you have on your phone. That's the Upper Hudson Library System app that allows you to access your accounts, search materials, reserve materials and manage your account in general. We're also renewing the New York Times Digital All-Access Subscription, which is $20,000. We are adding the Wall Street Journal Digital All-Access Subscription, which is $4,000 ad. And APL also receives a sort of symbolic, $55,944. I say symbolic because that does not actually directly pay someone's salary. It's basically an acknowledgement of the fact that APL staff are responsible for developing the collection of Overdrive materials, ebooks and audiobooks that come to users through the Overdrive platform for the whole Upper Hudson system. So APL librarians spend staff time building that collection. That's why there's staffing line in this budget. The Overdrive digital content, the rest of the, of the budget, which is $91,444, goes to the Overdrive digital content. So the, the APL staff purchase for this collection use that $91,444 throughout the year with advisory, with advice, I should say, from the e-content advisory committee. So they have guidelines as to how to spend that $91,444 to benefit of the whole network. So that's the description of the budget that we're asking that board approve. And then once it is approved at this board, it goes to the stage.
Just to, to chime in, that if you're looking at it here, there's, it doesn't say that the Upper Hudson Board of Trustees approved this. They approved it in the last meeting. Are there any questions about the Central Library Budget? Is there a motion to approve the Upper Hudson Library System Central Library Advisory Council's Recommended 2026 Central Library Budget?
I'll tackle that. Trustee Vanneta, I motion to approve the Upper Hudson Library System Central Library Advisory Council's Recommended 2026 Central Library Budget. First try.
Second, Barnum. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass. I think that was all that's right. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. Great. And now we're moving on to the five-year financial plan presentation.
All right, Melanie's helping with the setup. All right, thanks a lot, Melanie. So I just want to start by reminding the board that this is not a plan that you'll be taking action on this evening. It is, it is basically a presentation of information that the Audit and Finance Committee has seen and reviewed as well. I'm going to start off with some recent history. Oh, by the way, five-year financial plan is a good thing to have. Any organization should have five-year plan, a budget. So this is, this is a ritual that we go through periodically to make sure that we have resources we need to support our library system. So I want to first cover the recent budget history. Many here at this table and those community members out in the audience will remember that in 2007, voters in state Albany approved a $29.1 million branch improvement plan, which funded major renovations to Howe, Pine Hills, moved the Delaware branch to its current location and allowed for the construction of two brand-new library facilities. That's the Bach Branch and the Arbor West Hill Branch. This expansion significantly and not surprisingly increased our operating costs, which then prompted a 25% tax levy request, requested increase in 2011, just a few months after the branch improvement plan was completed. That vote, however, did not pass and the Albany Public Library Board saw fit to put back to the voters a 15% increase, which then passed by 53%, so a little bit of a tense situation there. But since 2011, we have kept, the board has kept tax levy increases under the tax cap. And in fact, there were five years in those years since the branch improvement plan where there was no tax increase at all for property taxpayers in the city of Albany. That was 2013, 14, 19, 20 and 21. So what we have seen is that the cumulative increase in operating budget tax levies over 14 years, which amounts to 22.70% or an average of 1.62 annually, is just not, not needing our, not able to meet our needs anymore in this time. We haven't had, in fact, a balanced budget that doesn't project the use of fund balance since before 2011. Why, you may ask? There were two key factors that kept us from realizing those reductions. So it kept us from having to dip into our reserve funds or our fund balance throughout those years. Those factors were numerous vacancies in our staffing model each year, meaning long periods of time where school staff would resign, leave the library. And then for months, we would, you know, we would need to go through the civil service hiring process, which is a lengthy and time-consuming process. But we were having, we were seeing vacancies at such a rate during these years that it was actually saving us a lot of money in payroll each year. That has stopped being the case. And we also, during those years, were seeing favorable outcomes in very many areas. And we also, during those years, were seeing favorable outcomes in very many areas, such as our non-tax revenue, interest income, tax surfeas, and utilities costs. So with all of that said, I want to move into where we are now. As I mentioned, the no library tax increase in years and cumulative effect of keeping those tax rates extremely low, while they did benefit taxpayers insofar as, you know, people didn't have to pay as much library taxes as perhaps they were seeing other costs go up in their lives, together with the impact of the New York State minimum wage increases that took place in recent years from 2021 to 2025, as well as the recent losses in non-tax revenue that I've spoken about at many community meetings since I started working here in 2022, namely the pilot payments, which were payment, which are payments in lieu of taxes that the library sees from various organizations that are on tax-exempt land and pay money to the city in lieu of taxes. So that, those pilot payments, which numbered, which amounted to like $400,000 in years prior, have fallen precipitously, and now we're seeing roughly $190,000, if that. So all of that, together with rising employee benefits costs, in particular healthcare costs, have really taken a toll on our financial position in the last couple of years. At the end of fiscal '24, '25, we did, we are seeing a six-figure reduction in fund balance. I say that we are seeing because the audit is still being finalized. So, you know, we never like to say that it's in stone until the audit is finalized. But in fact, what we're looking at is a reduction in fund balance. That's not sustainable in any way, shape, or form. So as a result, we really, we have to stop relying on numerous vacancies and these favorable variances in a given fiscal year to really support our operating costs. And we need a more sustainable financial plan. In fact, later this year, we're going to have to ask the board to approve a transfer of funds from our capital reserve back into our fund balance so that we can have enough to operate for the next, the first three months of the next fiscal year. We don't receive our tax levy until October, which we have done for this year, but next year is next year. So all of that said, we're looking now at, this is the five-year plan that I am presenting to the board for future, present and future consideration. We're looking at needing a 15% increase in fiscal '27, which is above the tax cap. However, a tax increase for a home assessed at $250,000 would be $37 on top of what people are paying now for library taxes. With that commitment, we then with modest increases years thereafter, we'd be able to create what many healthy organizations, including many financially healthy libraries, have, which is a capital improvements and contingency line in the budget. This would help shore up our fund balance and effectively create that much-needed healthy fund balance that will allow us to continue to maintain and improve our seven branches and, you know, continue to do better year over year as a library. And I'm not suggesting that it will allow the library to add a number of physicians or, you know, do anything drastic. This is really necessary just to right the ship. We cannot continue to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars out of our fund balance and expect to be in a good position. This is just necessary. It's just necessary correction. And it's nobody's fault. But it is where we are now and have to recognize it. And if we're going to support, continue to support the library system that Albany has come to rely on and expect services from, this is what we're going to have to consider for fiscal '27. The capital improvements and contingency line also sets a limit on what we can afford to put toward capital projects each year, grant funds aside, and of course allows us to cover unexpected expenses or revenue shortfalls, of which we have seen several in the last few years. And with some projects at APL being eligible for funding through the Division of Library Development Construction Program, Construction Granting Program, I should say, and some not being eligible, you know, we can't afford to just ignore the maintenance of our buildings simply because those projects may not be eligible for DLD grant funding. We have to move forward and make those improvements to our buildings and structures to keep them sound, to keep them leak-proof, et cetera. So yeah, that's, that's what we're looking at for a five-year plan right now. I'm going to move ahead and show you the status quo scenario, which is not a, this is, this is not a scenario that anyone would recommend or advise for the library, I don't think, because it shows the modest 2% increases, which are well under the tax cap for each year. But we can, we will not be able to maintain status quo library services with just those 2% annual tax levy increases. In fact, in fiscal '26, '27, and '27, '28, we're seeing a really high risk of having insufficient fund balance to cover operating costs start fiscal '28, '29. So drastic measures need to be taken to reduce expenses and stay within budget if those status quo budgets came to pass. So with current staffing hours and branches, APL requires $2.5 million in the fund balance to operate during the first three months of the fiscal year. And the red numbers on the bottom of the status quo spreadsheet show our fund balance sinking to to basically under, well under $2.5 million by by that time. So it's, you know, not, not a good scenario. I'm going to move ahead to another scenario that the Audit and Finance Committee requested that we put together, which is the five-year Plan B revote scenario. In, in the event that a 15% increase would go before voters and fail, the board would, would probably consider, at least consider the option of going back out for a revote. However, this is not an advisable scenario because, first of all, we don't know the cost of actually going out for a revote at this time. We would have to consult with the clerk, School District Clerk. Thank you very much.
Not me.
And, and we would have to get a real number on that. $50,000 is what it cost the library to go back out for a revote in 2011. Obviously, that cost has gone way up. And we don't know exactly what it is to be crunch those numbers with good information, which we don't have at this moment. But, but even if we were to go out for that 10% increase and succeed, it's, it's not going to put us in the place we need to be. The difference between a 10% increase and a 15% increase is over $400,000. And assuming all the revenue and expense projections remain the same for the library, the 10% revote results in continued deficit projections, which we want to avoid forward, and eliminates the inclusion of that wonderful capital contingency line that is a hallmark of a healthy budget for a library. The deficit projections are more manageable than the ones we are seeing in fiscal '25, '26, but still put us at risk, in this scenario, I should say, but still put us at risk of ending fiscal '29 or '30 with insufficient fund balance for the next fiscal year. We would continue to be reliant on vacancies and different variances to offset the deficits, barring major cuts, and funding capital projects would become increasingly difficult to do. So those are the three scenarios for you this evening. And I just want to offer a decision statement before, you know, for questions. The goal of this closed five-year plan is to maintain the level of library services that taxpayers have supported and valued the past 15 years and make key improvements as resources allow. And as I, as I said earlier, if the 15% increase in the next fiscal year and modest increases under the tax cap in years following would allow us to achieve a balanced operating budget that does not drain our fund balance year over year. And it would also help us create that capital improvements and contingency line that safeguards us against the unexpected and helps fund the capital improvements for our seven branch system. So with that said, I welcome questions at this time. But again, you're not voting, so this is all for information.
I don't have a question at this time. I just want to say that I think you did a great job summarizing it and using very digestible language. So thank you for the work that you put into this and presumably Adam and the
Adam Stump deserves a lot of credit. Yes, yes. Finance Director Adam Stump, everyone.
I second the thank you. Probably shout out to finance, too. Thank you.
Okay, well, you know where to find me if you have additional questions about this five-year plan or any of the scenarios that I've outlined tonight for you. Again, this, you know, is not out for a vote tonight, but it is an attempt to educate the community and the board about the position that the library is in right now and what we can probably expect in the way of a conversation a couple of months from now. So thank you very much. I really appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you. Right. Moving on to policy and governance? Or I guess, am I presenting this item or is staff?
Yeah, I can, I can
Want to take it?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry.
So, no, I'll just kick it off by saying that part of the reason that staff is presenting it is policy and governance. We were very into the editing and reviewing of the policy, and we inadvertently failed to make a recommendation coming out of committee. So we realized this after we were out of, out of committee. So I, after staff presents it, I'm sure the committee can offer their comments. Issue we had, just reflected in our, with that short disclaimer, I'll turn to Director Nicolai.
Okay, so the first policy up for your consideration is the lactation and breast milk expression policy. This is a policy that follows a new state law where employers are required to provide reasonable accommodations for breastfeeding employees. Now, we have already been doing this, so it's kind of an acknowledgement of, of our current practice, but it's also really good and necessary to have a policy that aligns with New York State law on this count. So it basically just makes sure that Albany Public Library is going to provide paid break time for employees to express breast milk. And we have places at each branch that can be made private and, and meet all of the criteria that are outlined for accommodating nurse employees. So yeah, I, you know, feel free to review and ask any questions that you have, but it's pretty straightforward and fairly boilerplate. And I want to thank the, our HR Generalist and Melanie for, for working on this policy for us to consider.
Are there any questions?
I had a question in reference to the timeframe. It seemed to be a bit vague, or maybe that's by design, that there isn't a timeframe for the notice that an employee wants to breastfeed and in turn, a timeframe for the library getting back to them in reference to accommodating the breastfeeding. So I was wondering if that's something that needed to be added, or is that not of any significance? It seems like that could be a little.
Thank you, Trustee Gauz. I think the reasonable advance written notice is to allow the employee leeway as far as when they make their request. They may have other considerations related to their, their health and welfare. So we wanted to leave that deliberately vague, and that was the language that was also in the boilerplate that we used. But the advance notice is, has to be responded to within five days. So APL has to respond within five working days presumably, and will subsequently send written confirmation to the employee about which room or location has been designated.
Right, so with the, the reasonable, the, the reasonable advance written notice, my concern was in reference to the employee because reasonable advance written notice, that timeframe could be interpreted differently by different people. So
Yeah, that's true.
My concern is with the employee giving a timeframe that they may feel is reasonable or was something that they were able to, you know, to do, it may be been emergent, but for the library, say, they're stating that, you know, is not reasonable. I, I just, that just leaves room for just different interpretation, um, in reference to that. And I just wouldn't want that to be something that an employee would be, it would end up on a negative end for the employee.
That's true and valid. As far as, as, yeah, I hear that concern. I, I can't imagine a scenario where the library would, even, even a day, even 24 hours would be enough ostensibly to, to make sure that we have things in place to support the employee. I can't imagine begrudging anyone the time or the, the accommodation that they need for their family and themselves. So I don't know. I, I don't know what the guidance is as far as this.
He said it was in reference to a state law. So is there any guidance in there?
We used the language from the state law, proposed policy.
Then if DOL, I mean, they're not gonna, you can always become more strict, but using the baseline is usually the best practice.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that in the committee meeting, we sort of did a side-by-side comparison of the DOL law to the draft policy before us tonight. And we did make some changes so that they were more, they were pretty directly comparable. And I, I just pulled up DOL's policy to check if there was any guidance there to address Trustee Gauz's concern. And all I see on DOL's page is about regarding advance notice. It just says you must notify your employer in advance, preferably before you return to work from maternity leave. So there's no quantitative outline there, but I, I think it's absolutely a great question to bring up. Thanks, Trustee Gauz.
Are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none. And as, oh, go ahead.
I was just wondering what, what counsel thought about that?
Trustee Gauz, I hadn't had a chance to do a review of these before they came in the packet, but I did get a chance to review them after they got in the packet. And I, I was basically okay with the, the phrasing of the, the policy. I think if, if we had done this, we might have changed the wording slightly just to be a little bit more clear, but I don't think there's anything that's problematic about it. I think we're okay.
Okay, thank you.
So as policy and governance did not actually vote on this during their meeting, this actually does need a motion. Is there a motion to approve the lactation and breast milk expression policy?
I move that we adopt the lactation and I move that we adopt the lactation and breast milk expression policy as presented, Trustee Barnum.
Stephanie and Trustee Jackson.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Moving on to the Microsoft Windows password policy.
Yeah, this is not the most exciting policy that you'll ever see, but it is necessary and good to have for insurance purposes and just for general technology hygiene for employees of the library. So the purpose is to ensure the security of user accounts and APL data in accordance with industry cybersecurity standards. We happen to use Microsoft, and we will for the foreseeable future be using Microsoft because the protections and security and interoperability with our firewall and all of the protections that we need for the public data we hold, as well as our staff data, yeah, is the best model that is out there currently. So it really just outlines the requirements for the password and outlines how employees should proceed with password change prompts and how they should store passwords. And it's pretty, pretty good stuff for anyone who uses any, you know, private account of any kind. This is sort of industry standard advice. So we are ready to embrace it, and we're ready to bring our compliance in line with our insurers' expectations as well. So it's in that spirit that I present this policy for consideration by the board.
And just going to ask if there's any questions.
I was just going to offer another comment. Same situation as last time. PNG reviewed it, we made some tweaks. We conferred with Jimson Pell in some of the questions we had about the policy. So while we don't have a recommendation, and I'll, you know, defer to my colleagues, Trustee Jackson and Vice President Allen, if they have any comments. But we reviewed it, tweaked it in consultation with staff and-
Yeah, and Jimson also reiterated that this went along with all of the best practices for the agencies who make policy at like the national level around information technology security. So it's all aligned.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I can confirm that this aligns with my background in cybersecurity. So it's very basic, but this will get the job done.
All right. Are there any more questions or comments? Hearing none, believe we do need a motion for this. So is there a motion to accept the Microsoft Windows password policy?
Trustee Jackson, I make a motion to accept the Microsoft Windows password policy.
Second, Barnum.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This is unanimously.
Thank you. Great, Jimson will be so happy.
And the last item under new business is the 2026 board meeting schedule. So the 2026 schedule has been, it's attached to the meeting generally the second Tuesday of the month. I did hear from Director Nicolai earlier today about it requesting to shift the February 2024, the 24th of February, not 2024. The, to switch that meeting to a day earlier. So instead of the Tuesdays, it would be the Monday due to personal staff issues and availability. I have no, personally, no problem with shifting it, but I do want to make that there for conversation. Hearing no comments.
I'm sorry, you said shifting the 24th to what day?
The 23rd.
I think that it could possibly pose a problem for trustees. So is that something that we could, we can vote on everything else with the exception of that date in consideration of that possibly changing to the 23rd?
I would assume, is it, okay, and then we can add the 24th to the 23rd to old business next meeting? Okay.
Perfectly an okay thing to do.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the board's meeting schedule for 2026 with the exception of the February 24th special budget session, which will be discussed next meeting?
I'm absolutely not going to get all of that. So I'm going to motion to approve the board's meeting schedule for 2026, barring discussion of the 24th of February for later meetings.
Thank you. Is there a second? Trustee Marlowe, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is unanimous. Thank you. And is there any more public comment? Perfect, thank you. We do need to enter into executive session. So I would like to, at this point, move to enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular APL employee. Yes. Thank you.
Mostly just the orange name tags, honestly. Well, we all have to join this, yeah. Thank you so much for coming.
I need a second and a vote.
Oh, yeah, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I second.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, though. I made the motion. Good night. Trustee Gauz, did you vote on moving to executive session?
Aye. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, for all of those watching from home, the board will now be going into executive session. Any votes made will be reflected in the minutes. Thank you and have a good evening.